Absolutely, as far as I'm concerned. You know, we do need infrastructure across the county. There's parking, you know, we've talked about this for several years, of parking across the county on St. George, Appalachia, Caravelle. And, you know, you may need to acquire some different properties to provide that. And there's just a host of things that you could do, the TDC could do. And yes, I guess I'm not speaking for the board, but I'll support your application and bringing back to us exactly what you're going to apply for.
I'll talk to you.
Any commissar comments on that issue?
No, I concur.
Yeah, we need parking out there by that order too. Ain't got none.
You're right.
Next item, St. George Island bathrooms. You know, we had some designs done on the bathroom now a couple of years ago. You all, we have just finished the Caravelle bathrooms. Our board has asked me to check with you about proceeding ahead on the getting the design worked out and the bidding for the St. George Island facility. We have money in our budget for this coming year, and the board was concerned that we needed to get started on it if we were going to try to do some improvements on that bathroom before the summer season so we don't run into the kind of problems we did last year. So, I guess my understanding is that we've got a set of plans. There are some modifications that might be useful to do. Improve the electric there, something about showers, and, you know, we needed to look at. But all in all, the plans are pretty solid, and I guess, Michael, maybe you can help us about where to go with this to get it.
I was going to add, the board remembered that we went through that bidding process, that the bids came in way, way higher than we expected. I think they were higher than what TDC was allowed to spend. I actually have Doug Schuler, the architect, he redesigned the plans to cut some costs. I was contacted by the Lighthouse Association, I believe, and they are also interested in forwarding some designs. They would like to see that I would forward to Doug Schuler. Not that he has to do it, but just to, you know, get their input in the situation. So, that's where we're at, because we have to. Go ahead, Kurt. What is the maximum you guys could spend on it?
I think we decided it was 120. That was what we put aside for the Caravelle bathrooms.
So, I got to get Doug to bring some plans back. That could get into that range, is what we're doing.
Well, if you're going to take suggestions from different entities now...
I know.
It's all got to be done on $120,000. So, I mean, we don't want to try to build a Taj Mahal on $120,000. It ain't going to work.
No, yeah.
And the more of that you do, the more you're stalling of completing the bidding process, because until you come up to what you want, you can't put it out to bid.
Exactly.
So, you're continuing to, you know, you need to move on, but you need to move on it quickly.
Okay.
And if these suggestions are just far-fetched, then you need to get the contract done, I mean, and get the bid specs done where you can get it out to bid, so they can get started on it probably right after the first of the year, in order to have it completed by March or April.
May or June.
So, you're, yeah, so you're backing up timeline when you're taking too many suggestions that are going to be over the budgetary.
I'll make sure...
Mr. Chairman, if I can, let me ask Mr. Maroney a question. Michael, how much money did we end up spending on the Caravelle bathrooms? Can you remember?
Was that at the 120 mark? I'd have to go and...
I think we had a slight overrun on it, 1,000, 2,000 dollars or something.
Okay, but somewhere around 120. So, we stayed within budget on that.
Yeah, we did.
But you also remember it took about four months extra.
And a lot of gray hair.
And a lot, yeah. To finish the project up, I think it would be very wise for us to go ahead and start out the bidding process if we can get out to it.
Okay.
But I would defer to the commissioner of that district, and that would be Mr. Jones, because I would hate to see us get in the middle of this tourist season like we did with Caravelle bathrooms, and it was awful for Commissioner Massey and myself.
Yeah.
But I think we need to move ahead on it, like the chairman said.
Okay.
I don't understand. Ain't nothing but a bathroom, $120,000. Don't make sense.
Hopefully, we're not expecting them to gut it like they did in Caravelle. They pretty much gutted Caravelle down to just the walls. I think, I think we think that...
That was the problem with Caravelle.
The scope of work is going heavily...
I was telling y'all it was bad.
Actually, it was old, they were leaking it.
Yeah, that's what I said. I told y'all, you know, Commissioner Massey and myself said y'all, it was bad.
Also, Michael, when we're looking at this thing, whenever you decide to go out for bid, there needs to be a clause in there if you're not finished by a certain time. There needs to be somebody going to have to pay, which gives the contractor incentive to go to work on it.
Absolutely.
And keep working on it and complete it by the deadline specified, because if there ain't a clause in there, my God, it might be this time next year before they finish. You know what I'm saying? But if there's a substantial financial clause in there, then they're going to go to work on it, they're going to get a crew on it, and get it done before we get into the middle of tourism season. So, that's something else that needs to be looked at.
But you can build a house for $120,000 now, I agree.
I don't understand, Commissioner. I talked to Doug, he said there's, you know, and maybe Alan could speak better to this as he used to be planning. He said the cost for doing construction per square foot on the coast is way more expensive than you realize. I mean, I've asked this question over and over again.
It's a bathroom.
But you're putting in heavy-duty, and I'm not defending the price or anything in there, but I know you're putting heavy-duty, you know, structures in there. I mean, the bathrooms, the toilets, all that sort of stuff.
Commercial.
Commercial-grade, because it needs to withstand a lot of abuse. And then the building itself is in a windload, right there, the coastal windload, so there's some structural issues that got to be dealt with. I would, I agree, I hope it would be less than 120,000. But I remember five years ago when we looked at this thing, I thought the price then was $80,000. That was five years ago, and things have gotten more expensive. And all we were doing five years ago was taking the existing building and closing in the front. We weren't making the building any bigger, we were just going to close in the front and add another stall on each side. So, it was really a minor thing, but it was expensive. That was, that was five years ago.
Anyways, let's...
I will, though. Back to Kurt.
Thank you. Just a couple of updates. We did a review of the Big Ben Scenic Byways Project. Some people have been asking about that. They've had some problems in the administration of that, but they've got those worked out. We, the board approved some slight modifications on the kiosks that we're looking for seeing, and we should be seeing some construction on those kiosks. I think we've got five in this county over the next year. The visitor's center, we had a ribbon cutting last night at the St. George Island Visitor Center. The great reopening of the visitor's center is now being managed by the Appalachian Bay Chamber, and we had a good turnout, and we're all excited about that. And let's see. Also, our board approved a motion to redesign the sign at the East Point Visitor Center. It's not well-seen, and we've got to do some gardening as well, but we're going to get the sign revised, if that's all right with everybody. And finally, the board recognized Frank Cook and Walter Armistead at our last meeting for their years of service on the TDC board. That's all I have. If any questions, I'd be glad to.
Any comment from the board members to Mr. Blair? Thank you, Kurt, for coming in today. Next on the agenda would be Gene and Chris Langston, letter of support. Please come forward, say your name for the record.
I'm Gene Langston.
And I'm Chris Langston.
Good morning. Go ahead, Ms. Jean.
Well, I had our little dog and pony show all ready to go, but I got here and the first thing I heard is that I need to get a letter from the state before y'all do anything. And I don't know who I'm supposed to get a letter from, or what you're going to do with it. Mr. Chairman, to my knowledge, and I've been doing business with this board for 40 years, y'all ain't never worried about whether I made any money or not. So, you know, it sounds, what it sounds like to me is Miss Cheryl stall tactics. I done been through this one time before, and we fought...
Mr. Jean, hold, 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 Mr. Chairman.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Mr. Chairman, let me close out. I've not spoken to nobody, Mr. Jean.
Well, you're not supposed to.
I did not.
How did this come up?
I don't know. Ask them, I don't even know what you're talking about. But I'm not going to sit here and have you demean me as a commissioner, because I have not talked to anyone. I have not even talked to staff. I don't talk to commissioners. That's against the sunshine laws. And how dare you insinuate that I have?
I'm not insinuating anything. Somebody did.
You just did!
Well, I'll do it again.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Present what you come here for, Mr. Jean.
Basically, it goes, it's a letter. Mr. Chairman, basically, we're here today, we are proposing mining fossilized shell in the northeastern corner of Franklin County for the purposes of the cults depositions. We are not concerned with the current cults deposition, but what the purpose of this is, is just simply a letter of support, showing support that we will, as you are aware, you all have a copy of the email that I sent you. We will be providing jobs to the area. We will also be providing intangible tax revenue to an area that's currently tax-free. And in this process, we're going to be providing material for the Appalachian Bay area for the oyster habitat restoration, as well as other areas up and down the Gulf Coast. Now, that's going to take, you know, it's going to take some advertisement, it's going to take some legwork, letting people know that this material is available. So, I think it's what my father was trying to say, is getting a letter now is kind of premature on sales. But basically, we are here today is, we simply need a letter of support saying that you support this organization or this operation as a proposal.
Oh, okay. Why do we, why do we need, explain to me why we need a letter of support for the county for you to go into private business?
Because it's going to be going on state lands, state-owned property.
Okay.
And in the process, we will be going to the Division of Forestry. From there, we will be getting with Division of Forestry and coming up with a management plan, you know, stormwater retention, as well as several other aspects of the business. We will be then going from there to the Department of Agriculture, and then to the Governor and Cabinet. But as of right now, a letter of support is somewhat necessary, showing that we have local support on this when we go to the different branches of the government.
Okay, very well explained.
Mr. Chairman, I can say something. I spoke to Mr. Langston before the meeting.
Would you tell him I did not talk to you? Forgive me, Mr. Jean.
No, you haven't talked to me, but I told him...
I'm upset.
I understand, I understand. Go ahead.
I ain't going to apologize for...
Hold, 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 let Mr. Pierce say what he needs to say. Go ahead, Mr. Pierce.
I told Mr. Langston when he told me what he was looking to use the material for, and I did speak to him correctly, I said, "Mr. Langston, look, I don't think there's any need for you to dig for shell, because as far as I know, the state of Florida is not going to buy any more shell material. They have told us point-blank over and over again, the state of Florida is not going to put any more shell in the Appalachian Bay. The only person that may be, the only entity putting shell in the bay will be Franklin County at some point in the future." But to look, and I say this honestly to you, to look at aquaculture or the Division of Aquaculture as a buyer, I don't think is reasonable for you all. I mean, they told us so many times, they are never going to put more shells in the bay, and I said that before the meeting, that I don't know that he has a market right now.
Okay. But that, you know, that's, anyway, I'm glad you explained that. I was looking at our consortium timeline yesterday. I don't know if that's changed since the last meeting. It may have. I don't know what's going on with consortium, but I think it was 2022, Alan, before we...
Yes.
Get any funding to do a shelling program at this time?
Right.
Okay.
That would be the earliest.
The earliest, five years.
That would be the earliest, and things are changing all the time with the consortium, which is where we were planning on doing a shelling project. But we got some other things we got to do with this bay before we get to that point, so that may be on the right time. So, what we need to do now is ask for a letter of support here from the board, if you support that. And I do know that there were some issues one time before, as, I don't remember if it was the current prospect that was going to expand closer to your house, Commissioner Sanders?
Yeah.
With the blasting and all, I just remember the brief conversation.
Back in the early '90s, when the pit opened up in Liberty County, there was some problems with our groundwater, I mean, our drinking water. Our well is 135 feet down, and because of the blasting and stuff in Liberty County, it was coming down, and I had groundwater contamination in my drinking water and in titanic acid. When I reported it to DEP, they said they were sorry, but I didn't have any rights to say anything, because I lived in Franklin County and didn't live in Liberty. So, that's the reason why. I have grave concerns for this, myself, and against any mining in Franklin County because of the Appalachian Bay and all its tributaries.
Mr. Chairman.
Hang on, she's still speaking here.
I will finish up with that, and that's all I'm going to say. But I am, I'm opposed to any mining.
Go ahead, Ms. Jean.
I knew she was opposed to mine. I talked to her when she was in South Florida, but that's not the issue. We went through this whole rigmarole when I opened the first mine up between Cheryl and I. I mean, it got rankrous to the point that I had to get FDLE involved in it, because people were calling my wife, threatening to kill her, and, and me. I mean, I don't know why anybody would want to kill me, but anyway, we're just trying to open up a business. This is an area of opportunity. The price has finally got up high enough for fossilized shell, make some money in it. And that is the only place, Mr. Chairman, that I know of that a deposit exists like this fossilized shell. Get those samples. Can he approach and show you the samples?
Sure.
Let me show you what's going in the bay now, and what we're trying to do.
Okay.
And... I mean, a good bit of the material that's up there from my old mine is going to Chesapeake Bay right now. I mean, they're putting it on rail cars and sending it to Chesapeake.
This is what will be mined. You can see in that right there is that's some of the shale.
This ought to y'all, right?
Yes, it is. That's what's going in the bay, it's in your left hand currently. That came straight off the bore. And that's what's located in the north-east corner of Franklin County.
They've been there a while.
Yes, and I think in the last...
That's rocks, ain't it?
Huh?
That's rocks, ain't it?
That's what they're putting in the bay now.
That's what's going in the bay currently right now.
Granite.
Well, it's limestone, but I can say in the Appalachian Valley, in this recent publication, the FWC was talking about the amount of predators. Basically, it's a bad day to be an oyster. And one reason for that is because if you'll notice with this material, there's a lot of what biologists call dark space. And as that spat, when it attaches, it has an opportunity to scurry for 48 hours when it falls out suspension of the water. It scurries to find dark space. Well, what that dark space does is it creates actually a home for and protection for that spat to start growing and producing its shell. And it also gives it somewhat a safe harbor, safe haven from predators, which are, you know, basically, the fish that feed on them. This type of material doesn't give it. Sheephead will eat them right off the top of that rock, whereas with fossilized shell, it's a little bit, you know, gives them a little bit better chance to survive. It cuts down greatly on your mortality rate.
Pleasure of the board on this issue. Pleasure of the board on this issue.
I got a question.
Okay.
Who's going to go into bid this week here?
It's going to be a gentleman, it's going to be Pigott over in, we'll call it County, and Tim Abidale. They've got the equipment, and we've got the knowledge, and we've teamed up, partnered up, and we're, it's a local business. Been in business for about, oh, about 20 years.
Any other questions from the board? Pleasure of the board on this issue.
You be blasting?
No, sir, we will not be.
You won't?
There's no need to. We won't be blasting. And I'm very well aware of the deposit that's located in where the current mine is. There was material down roughly 50, 60 feet that does not exist on this area that we're talking about. Meaning, it was multitudes of different types of material, and when you got down to about 65 feet, there was a need to blast at the existing mine where we're at now. Several issues. One is, it's fossilized shell all the way down. It's a different type of deposit, as well as, there won't be any need to blast, because there are different types of method of excavation available.
There's also about 200 acres of sand, white sand.
Yeah.
That we discovered, and there's a big need for beach sand all over Florida. And we've had it tested, and it'll meet the requirements. There's a little bit of difference in the specs on each city's beach. I guess the coloration or size of the sand or whatever, but we can work with the state and try to get that worked out.
That's right. It's going to be, there's going to be a multitude of materials that are being extracted for these types of operations statewide.
Any other comments from board members? We do need a pleasure of the board on this issue. What do we, what do we do, attorney? We have no motion for or against?
Well, Mr. Chairman, procedurally, if the board takes no action, there will be no letter that's issued one way or the other. The only way that you want to take any action is if there's a motion in favor of sending the letter.
Okay.
I would just make a call for the motion. If there is no motion, then it will die for lack of action.
Okay, I've called for action twice, pleasure of the board two or three times, and we're not getting any, any response from the board for or against.
Mr. Chairman, I would call for board action one, third and final time, and if there's
no board action, we're going on the agenda.
Let me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What seems to be the problem? There's an underlying problem here somewhere that we ain't talked about. I'll withdraw from y'all even deciding anything, but I can't correct something that I don't know.
Well, it sounds like to me there ain't no support for sending a letter of support, Mr. Jean. I mean, I've called for board action three different times.
Okay, so it doesn't matter, doesn't matter what I do?
Okay. So, you're not...
No motion for or no motion against.
Okay.
So, there's nobody saying yea and nobody saying nay, you know?
Okay.
Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next will be Ms. Amy Hamm Kelly, Board of Adjustment report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Amy.
Good morning. This morning, we have a recommended approval. It was a unanimous vote for a consideration of a request for a variance from Franklin County's minimum lot size, one acre rule. Lot 7, Southwest Cape, a replat of South Shoals Village. According to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book 10, page 51, of the public records of Franklin County, Florida, Lot 7, presently consists of a part lying south of Tom Roberts Road, that is 0.394 acres plus or minus, and a part lying north of Tom Roberts Road, that is 0.708 acres plus or minus. Franklin County just purchased from the property owner all of the Southwest Cape subdivision south of Tom Roberts Road, except for a part of Lot 7 of that road, which is also presently a paved road known as South Shoals Court. The property owner is willing to convey to Franklin County all of Tom Roberts Road, which is 0.708 acres plus or minus, receives a variance from the county's minimum lot size, one acre rule. And that remainder of Lot 7 lying north of Tom Roberts Road, which is 0.708 acres plus or minus, will not be deemed unbuildable as a result of being approximately seven tenths of an acre and less than one full acre as a result of the conveyance to Franklin County, Florida. The variance would be perpetual, transferable by the property owner, and would run with the land. Example, the remainder of Lot 7 lying north of Tom Roberts Road is 0.708 acres plus or minus. We do have a map showing the full of Lot 7, which is north of Tom Roberts Road and south of Tom Roberts Road. So, what the county is wanting is to give this lot that is north of Tom Roberts Road a variance from the one acre rule, so that the county does not have any, any land that doesn't own, we don't own, south of the road.
Basically, if you add the numbers together, it's 1.12 acres if they kept the whole thing, but they're wanting to give us this side, which is around the retention pond there, but they still want to be able to build on the north side, and it's only because they're willing to convey the bottom side to the county. I think, I think it's a win-win.
North side of Tom Roberts. I like the idea myself, because it does give all that property in there, you know, public ownership. So, that's a good thing.
Okay.
And anybody that's been down there any time lately, you can see the reason why we need it like that. But I'm, if there's, let's see, hold on now. So, this is to, okay, okay, I'm going to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sanders to accept the property and to approve the variance for the north side, that they still have a buildable lot there. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? A motion carries.
Okay, that concludes our Board of Adjustments. Okay, and we'll head into the planning and zoning recommendation agenda. This morning, we have a recommendation for approval. It's unanimous. It's a consideration of a request to construct a single-family residential dock located in section 31 Township 8 South, Range 6 West, 108 Island Drive, St. George Island, Franklin County, Florida. The proposed access walkway for the dock will be 155 feet by four feet, connecting to a 10-foot by 18-foot terminal platform without mooring and a three-foot step-down section. The total square footage of the dock will be 780 square feet. The applicant has their DEP permit, request submitted by Garlic Environmental Associates Incorporated, agent for Appalachian National Research Reserve, and there is a building on the lot. We do have a location map. It's in the area where the research reserve is, is located. Unfortunately, that's a blue line, it's kind of hard to see. So, give a...
What is, I thought it says without mooring. Wouldn't that be considered a pier?
Yeah.
But it's, but it's being proposed as a dock, Dan? Could you come forward?
She said single-family dock.
Dan Garlic for enter. It's a pier.
It is a pier.
Right.
Okay, that's, of course, it's been a long time since I've been on P and Z, but I still remember some things.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how the dock got into there, but it's definitely a pier.
But it's actually a pier with no moor.
Right. What they want to basically use it for is allowing access for kayaks and canoes. And there's an additional, we just wanted to make sure you saw that that was not going within the critical haptids zone, the other part there, but that, behind it, that's actually an observation platform, setback 54 feet, and that's going to have handicap access, so it's me come up and, you know, just look over the bay. So, there's like a two-part thing, but what we're here today for, of course, is the pier.
I don't have any, myself, I don't have any problem with... I don't have any, myself, I don't have any problem with-